Welcome to our November 10th, 2020 council meeting. So with that, I'll open the meeting and ask our city clerk to call for the roll.
Mayor John Caposha.
Here.
Mayor Pro Tem Rochelle Erzmann.
Present.
Councilmember John Harabedian.
Here.
Councilmember Jean Goss.
Here.
Mr. Mayor, you have a quorum and may conduct city business.
Okay, thank you. If everybody could stand, please, for the pledge of allegiance. Please repeat with me. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Okay, thank you. Please be seated. Okay, just for my inspiration today, I just want to congratulate the three new council members that will be seated at the December 8th meeting. And I do have just a little bit of wisdom for you from Teddy Roosevelt. The person who really counts in the world is the doer, not the mere critic. The person who actually does the work, even if roughly and imperfectly, not the man who talks or writes about how it ought to be done. Also, just want to thank everybody who ran and even the people that did not win. And Teddy Roosevelt has a little bit of advice for them as well. It is hard to fail, but it is worse never to have tried. So with that, thank you very much, and we'll move on to approval of the meeting agenda.
I'll move for approval.
Second.
Okay, Madam, oh, we can, I could just call for the vote here. So all in favor?
Aye.
Okay, none opposed, passes unanimously. Okay, approval of the meeting minutes? Any changes to the minutes?
They look good to me. Move to approve.
Second.
Okay, all in favor?
Aye.
Passes unanimously. Okay, mayor and city council reports. Anything to report?
I just wanted to echo the mayor's comments about my congratulations to everyone who ran and the candidates who threw their hat in the ring should really be commended because it's a really difficult process on the person running, on the family, on their friends who are helping, on the volunteers. And they're doing it for this community. And I want to especially congratulate those that didn't win because the three that did win, very deserving, I might add, will, for the next four years, get a lot of congratulations and a lot of people telling them that they're doing a good job. A lot of people telling them they're not doing a good job. A lot of people forget, though, the folks who ran and lost. And sometimes you got to run, you know, twice or three times to win. And I hope some of those folks do run again and someday win. So congratulations, you know, stepping into that ring is a big thing. And it shouldn't go unnoticed. And that's it. Thanks.
Thank you.
I'll just echo the sentiments and congratulations to, yes, those who put their name in the hat. And we were really worried in the beginning that we saw no names in the hat. So thank you for stepping up to the plate. And I look forward to serving with you, councilmember Alex Ed Garcia, Robert Parkhurst, and Kelly Creves. And welcoming back our city treasurer, Micah Marion.
And I really have nothing to add to that, except kudos to all of you. I did participate in the California Joint Powers Insurance Authority Annual Board Meeting last week. Nothing real exciting to report, except we did elect four new directors and we approved a budget which I thought was reasonable. And also participated or attended the Library Board of Trustees meeting, last meeting. And among other things, they discussed the disposition of the backlog. They did not come to a conclusion.
That's my report, Mr. Mayor.
Okay, thank you very much. I just want to correct Mayor Pro Tem Erzmann when she said she was worried about nobody would run. Really what she was worried about, that I was going to run again.
That's true.
So we've solved that problem. And yes, we're very happy and thrilled with the quality of all the candidates that stepped up to the plate. So I keep saying Sierra Madre's in great hands. Okay, so with that, I will open it up for public comment for any items that are not on the agenda. And again, just would request that you keep your comments to three minutes, please.
Can you hear me? I guess, okay. D. Alcorn, Grandview Avenue. Many years ago, when I was a young man, that's been many years, I joined the Navy. And I was in there for about two weeks. And then we got a notice from President Truman that they were going to do a police action in Korea. And I said, oh, my, I didn't sign up for that. I signed up to see the world, meet interesting people, and then go interesting places. Well, it turns out I did. And I served my four years in the Navy, and I got an honorable discharge. And that puts me in mind of the John Brothers here. They signed up for four years on city council. And I'm sure that after a couple of meetings, they said, I'm not sure I signed up for this. And they had their fun. And by no sign of a gun, they signed up another four years. They were having so much fun. And after eight years, here they are. They're going through their last phase. And I think that I want to tell them, I appreciate all the hard work they put in. It's been eight years. They've done honorable service. And I just want to say I thank you very much for the time and effort you put in. That's eight years. I know you got all this fabulous salary. You're making a million dollars. Now, for your minimal effort, you just recompense for what you do. And I do want to let you know, I do appreciate. I know you've had the best interests of the city at heart whenever you've done. I just want to thank you again for the good efforts you've done and the time and effort. It's been eight years. That's a long time. Eight years is a long time. I was four years, you're eight years. Anyway, I do appreciate that. One other thing, we have this beautiful lady here who conducted the election for the city. And she's done an outstanding job. You read about all the places in the world, all the trouble that they've had on elections like that. She conducted a flawless operation here, no glitches. It came on time, and it was done very efficiently. And right away, we knew the results. And I want to give her a big hand for the good effort she's done. Thank you, Laura. Good job. Well done. Thank you.
Thank you for the kind words. Any other, anybody else would like to speak on any item, any item that is not on the agenda?
Good afternoon, everybody. We are here to represent the Rotary Club of Sierra Madre.
Take your mic. Take them, if you wouldn't mind. Yeah, there you go. And real close to the mic also.
So this is Julie Brady. She is our active vice president. And my name is Karen Swisher, and I'm president of the Rotary Club 2020-2021. And we'd like to make an announcement, a couple. First of all, on November 21st, the Rotary Club will be putting up the Christmas decorations in town, as we always do. And it was brought to our attention that nobody knew who did it. So I'm just noting that Sierra Madre Rotary Club does it. And we have fun doing it. And I hope everybody appreciates it. The second thing is, we've been discussing for quite a while that the Rotary Club would like to donate or donate a town clock during the, thank you, remodel of Kirsten Court. Now, we've discussed it a lot. We have some great ideas. And we'd like to work with the people that are in charge of designing and, of course, you, to work with us to get that job done. I think it's really important, not only for, to let everybody in town know that Rotary's here, and we want a brand, we want to help people. And it would just be a great thing. And like, you know what? We don't have a clock. And a lot of other communities do. And I just thought it would be a nice addition to the remodeling of Kirsten Court. So there you go.
Julie, go on.
No, thank you. And especially to the two outgoing council members. Thank you for your wonderful work, John and John. We appreciate it.
John and John.
Thank you. I see Mr. Gordon stepping to the podium. Always look forward to hearing what he's got to say.
Thank you. David Gordon, Fairview Avenue, student of local government. I first would like to echo the previous remarks and give our thanks to those council members that are stepping off. We've been lucky enough to have an extremely good council for the last eight years, coinciding with my arrival in Sierra Madre. So thank you all very much. Secondly, could I request that the mayor do read out emails that have been sent to the meeting? And thirdly, it's tough having a meeting that's out in the open. And it was very considerate to move it earlier so that we wouldn't freeze to death. Timing is not totally convenient. Four o'clock is when I have my tea and crumpets. But there we are. One has to make sacrifices to come to a council meeting. But I do think there's an opportunity here to broadcast such a significant change. There is the medium of village views, village voice. Because most people assume the council meeting is at six o'clock. We wouldn't check it. Whereas if they had been sent an email saying, alert, change of meeting, it would help get a better attendance. And it's on the website, but buried. It's not in the section called news. So I would urge a greater effort be made to communicate such a significant change. Thank you.
Okay. My name is Pat Alcorn. I am speaking in behalf of Debbie Sheridan tonight. So I am Debbie Sheridan tonight. Good afternoon, city manager and council members. Communication seems to be a huge problem of late, and the problem is getting bigger. Let's start with today's meeting. It was supposed to take place at the park at 6:30, as it was two weeks ago. Apparently, it changed the time, but neglected to let the general public know. The only reason I know is because I was telling the Facebook complainers about the lack of face mask enforcement in town. And there was a post that it was actually, the city council was supposed to be at 4:00 P.M. Who knew? It wasn't on the agenda report, nor could I find it on the city's Facebook page. If it is too cold for we California wimps, then why didn't you just Zoom and as you've been doing and as you are doing with the planning commission? Secondly, there were at least two of us and possibly more who wanted to speak at the beginning of the planning commission meeting on Thursday. We waited and waited. I thought the closed session was running late. Finally, I got a text asking why I hadn't spoken, as I intended to. Learned the meeting was actually going on, but I had to watch on my computer. The excuse was technical difficulties. If so, it seems you could easily post something on the TV screen to that effect. I did manage to speak out of order and did watch part of the meeting. There seems to be a real disconnect between the planning commission staff and city council, both very hardworking, but out of sync with each other. As a Sierra Madre resident, I am asking you to remedy this situation for the good of the town. Thank you, Deb Sheridan, on Valley Vista Drive. And on behalf of myself, I would also like to thank Laura for her wonderful coordination of the election.
Good evening, honorable council members. Gary Hood, North Baldwin. And it looks like I'm repeating the same thing, so I'll make it even shorter. But with the MOU, the things going on with the planning commission, the design review, the pandemic, everything seems to be more concerning. And it seems that the, some of these issues are being pushed forward kind of quickly, especially with the MOU and stuff that's going on and other issues that will be coming up tonight. It's just that people would like to be notified as soon as possible that Channel 3 is not working, and if there's a chance for a Zoom meeting of when those meetings will be. So that's basically all I have to say. So we just need to have better communication as quick as we can. Thank you.
Okay, thank you. Okay, and last call. Anybody else? Okay, I'll close the public comment and bring it back. Okay, now, Madam City Clerk, we have the consent calendar. If you can go ahead and read the items on the consent calendar.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Item A, consideration of Resolution 20-69, approving certain demands. Item B, consideration of Resolution 20-72, approving of joint powers agreement and bylaws for California Intergovernmental Risk Authority, which permits the merger of the Public Agency Risk Sharing Authority of California and the Redwood Empire Municipal Insurance Fund. Item C, consideration of memorandum of understanding between the City of Sierra Madre and the Foothills Special Enforcement Team, FSAT. Item D, consideration of authorization to enter into water district loan agreement. Item E, consideration of approval of contract for the rehabilitation of well five. Item F, second reading of ordinance 1431 by title only, amending Chapter 17.08, definitions, Chapter 17.36, commercial, Chapter 17.60, variances and discretionary permits, and approving Resolution 20-62, commercial zone uses list. Item G, second reading of ordinance 1434, amending Section 17.60.041, design review permit of Chapter 17.60, variances and discretionary permits of Title 17, zoning of the Sierra Madre Municipal Code. Item H, second reading by title only of ordinance 1435, amending Title 3, 8, 12, 15, and 17 of the Sierra Madre Municipal Code regarding city commissions. And the last one, item I, consideration of the purchase of a new fire engine. And that concludes the consent items.
Okay, thank you, Madam City Clerk. Are there any questions for any items on the consent calendar?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Consent item two, I have a question, and then five. So I don't know if anyone has questions on anything before that. But I can start with my question on two. This is sort of a complicated question, but the financial impact of going over to ParsAC from JPIA, do we, is there a financial impact?
Councilman Harabedian, no, there's no financial impact to this. Everything will remain the same. ParsAC is merging with another risk-sharing organization, and this is simply a name change. But everything council approved earlier remains in effect.
Do we save money? Because I guess if there is no financial impact, the question is why we're doing it, right? So I guess the dovetails into that second question as to why we're doing it.
It's the, just the name change, same as if your insurance provider changed their name. They may ask you to sign documents showing that you're under the new name now. It's simply paperwork.
Sorry, I guess I misunderstood this then. I thought that we were eventually leaving JPIA and going to a new agency. So I guess my question is, joining the new agency?
This is the new agency. They changed their name from ParsAC to the new acronym. So I think we probably could have explained that better. But council, this is joining ParsAC, just with a new, they're changing their name. So it's just a new name, but all the coverage is everything we talked about. All remains the same.
ParsAC and RE/MIT join together, right?
That's correct. And ParsAC is much easier to say as an acronym, so we were very sad.
Now, what's the new acronym, though?
It's Redwood Empire Municipal Insurance.
No, no, that's the old one.
Oh, yeah.
Kira.
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 Kira, okay. Any other questions?
I have a question on five.
Oh, yeah.
So this is contemplating a sole-source contract to General Pump. And I guess the question is, is the reason why, or are we doing a sole-source contract because it's their technology on the well, and therefore no one else can do it? Or is there another reason why we wouldn't go out to bid?
That's a very good question. That is the reason why. They are the only, they are the only, they are the only rehabilitation contractor that has that technology available in Southern California. There's no other contractor that has a water-flush system. All of our wells, I'm sorry, three of the four wells that we have are water-flush lubricated technology by General Pump. And that's the reason why we're using them.
Okay, thank you. Any other questions? Okay, I'll open it up for public comment. Any comments on any item on the consent calendar?
Thank you, David Gordon, Fairview. I wish to comment on item G concerning the design review. This is now, I gather, the second hearing. So what I understand happens is you vote on it, but there's no option to discuss it and change it. However, I do recommend that the change is made at some point. The design review process has not gone well. The planning commission received guidance from council, acted in what it thought was a sensible way, goes back to council, council doesn't like it, goes backwards and forwards, and there's clearly, as had been mentioned before, not a good process for sorting this out. I think it's partly because of the machinery of local government with the relationship between council and planning commission. Doesn't encourage people actually to get together and discuss things together. But I do hope that a way could be found out of doing so. Because it's not a good, it's not a good advertisement for being on the commission if the recommendations seem to be overturned without too much explanation about why. So the, at one stage, there was a proposal to alter the design review findings, as they're called, the set of eight criteria by which designs are judged. And there were protests about this, and I'm glad to see that they were taken into account. And there's no longer a proposal to alter those findings. So they remain in place, which is great. Because had they been changed, I think there would have been all kinds of unintended consequences, to quote the favorite phrase of the mayor. However, the significant, just wait for Athena, goddess, goddess of public speaking, to, the significant change that has been made is to remove the application of design review from the planning commission to staff, to the director and staff. We have an excellent staff. However, there is not a member of the staff who is a trained architect, all kinds of related disciplines, but not architecture. And the planning commission is the place where you have people who can judge the main criterion of the findings. I just say, does it fit in with the character of this rather wonderful village? And not even where, whether people in the department live in Sierra Madre. But this is the place where you have a democratic system for saying, we're looking at this particular house being proposed. Does it fit in or not? And I think to give that entirely to staff with just a possibility of appeal to the planning commission, that is not a satisfactory outcome. So I would plead to change that at some point so that the planning commission does have a say in major new developments. Now, part of the criticism-
Mr. Gordon, your three minutes are up. Are you going to wrap it up? I'll let you go if you're going to wrap it up quickly.
Going to wrap it up very quickly.
Okay.
So the criticism has been that the planning commission gets involved all kinds of trivial things, and that people have to pay $5,300 to get a permit for something that is really straightforward. The way to deal with that is to raise the threshold, the things that go to the planning-
We've already discussed this, and, you know, I appreciate your comments. But I'm sorry, time's up, and it doesn't appear that you're wrapping up the way I expected. So thank you, Mr. Gordon.
I'm sorry. You're very good at making people wrap up, Jim.
Okay, now I'm ready. Pat Alcorn on Grandview Avenue. And Mr. Gordon actually said just about everything that I wanted to say, except that tonight, and I know you can change it, even though this is a second reading, that I'm asking you tonight to review the revision, to return the authority for a design review permit application to the planning commission. When an application goes to the planning commission, it gives greater transparency, greater oversight to the applicant and for the surrounding residents. Thank you.
Thank you. Any other comments on any item on the consent calendar?
Thank you for the good job you're doing. You even do the plan. You do everything.
Gary Hood, North Baldwin. And if the garbage truck goes by, I'll just talk a little louder.
We stop the clock when the truck goes by.
Oh, perfect. Well, Gordon, you talked too long. I'm a little bit confused. That's not unusual. On the consent calendar, I thought we could go through each item, and then after it was discussed, then the public comments. But we're commenting beforehand.
Nothing's different.
Nothing's different? So after each item is discussed, it's not open for public comment then?
We're doing things exactly as if we've always done them for the eight and a half years I've been on the council.
Okay, thank you. Well, there's many items here. And I think, as Mr. Gordon said, regarding the planning commission and the design review and everything that's going on, it just seems like this is being rushed through. You've probably heard everything, but it just seems like to me and to people in the community that we are not being represented, represented by the council. And like you had said before, Sacramento is coming down and ordering the city to do things, while us in the city feel like the council is now ordering us to do things and pushing this through. On an item, on the new fire engine, and I see the chief is here. I was wondering if the new fire engine was going to have a ladder more than 24 feet so that they could maybe get on the roof of a second-story building. We don't have a ladder to get on the third, third-story roof. And it's crucial when you're fighting a structure fire or evacuating the smoke from a building to cut a hole in the roof. And they do have crawl holes in a lot of homes. But by the time you get up to the crawl hole, you're not going to be able to extinguish the fire the same way and get the smoke out to save the family. I guess the chief will speak regarding the size of the ladders that we're going to have on the fire engine. And I don't see the timer here, so.
Forty-four seconds.
Forty-four seconds. Well, I can wrap it up. But the thing is, we know that it requires 500 signatures to give it a petition to go through if we want to make some changes from what this council is doing. And it's very concerning that this seems to be pushed through. And the two people who are leaving the council and leaving the city are making some changes for the next council. Thank you.
Thank you. Okay, any other comments on any items on the consent calendar?
Mr. Mayor, there was an email received from Deb Sheridan. I'll read it into the record, per her request. Dear Mayor and council members, please read this email aloud at the council meeting. Regarding consent calendar item number G, several of us spoke two weeks ago, as did two members of the planning commission about reducing unnecessary regulation in the application of design standards. The Planning Commission Subcommittee of Commissioners Hutt, Dallas, and Catalano- did an excellent job of working on the standards and reduced the thresholds of applicability. On the design review standards themselves, the planning commission pointed out that there was no legal requirement to change them under the new tighter state regulations. And that if changed, the new state requirements for so-called objectivity would come into play, and that we would be one of the first places to take this step. We are in effect removing the limited discretion of the planning commission. Instead of taking the advice of the commission, you are choosing to circumvent them altogether and give staff the responsibility of approving any conditional use permits. As I said two weeks ago during the first reading, this is unconscionable. You are taking away the voice of the residents. Why? Please reconsider. I would also like to know what the role of the planning commission would be going forward. It is my understanding that should you choose to enact item number eight, giving staff all the power to decide what will be allowed to be built in Sierra Madre with a huge project on the horizon, that we can request a ballot initiative to reveal, to repeal this travesty. I would imagine there are quite a few people watching tonight who would be happy to sign the initiative. Last point, I don't believe this meeting tonight was properly noticed because it did not appear in our official newspaper, The Mountain Views News. We are old as residents, and not everyone has a computer. People still rely, do still rely on the printed newspaper. And now you changed the time of the meeting from 6:30 PM to 4:00 PM. Why not just zoom, why not just zoom it as you have been doing? I repeat, please reconsider. Don't let this be what you will be known for as a council. While on procedure, the technology for the last planning commission meeting broke down. Channel three did not broadcast the meeting, and those who relied on channel three did not realize the meeting had started, available only via computer. I could not be sure my contribution to that meeting was heard. Thank you, Deb Sheridan.
Okay, thank you. Okay, any other public comments for the consent calendar? Okay, with that, we'll close it and bring it back to the council. Do we have a motion?
Was there any, do you want to get any answers to the, the fire truck, the-
No, I think Mr. Hood can communicate directly with the fire department on that.
I'll move for approval of the consent.
Second.
Okay, all in favor?
Aye.
Okay, none opposed, passes unanimously. Okay, now we have a couple of public hearings here. The first two are Mills Act. And what I'd like to propose is we discuss those together because they're very similar in a lot of ways, and we can answer all the questions at one time, and then we'll just vote on them separately. So with that, who will be presenting on that one? Mr. City Manager?
It'll be Josh Wolf, our planner.
Okay.
Good evening, Mayor, and members of the City Council. Tonight, I'll be presenting two applications for Mills Act contracts, the first being for 331 East Allegria Avenue, otherwise known as the J. Gamble Carson House. On slide two, you'll see the project location. It is located on East Allegria Avenue, east of Mountain Trail Avenue and bordered on north by Sturdivant Drive, most notably located and seen from Sturdivant Drive. On the next slide, you'll see that the designated local architectural landmark is a property listed on the, currently listed on the city's register of local historic cultural landmarks. Originally purchased lots 22 through 25 of the Cannon tract, over five acres of land with Sierra Madre's first reservoir on site. The house was originally constructed on the rock walls of an unused reservoir built in 1914. On the next slide, I'll go over what a Mills Act contract is. Generally, it is when the property owner is proposing to enter into a Mills Act contract, they intend, the Mills Act contracts themselves intend to serve as a method of reducing property tax liability for designated cultural resources. Owners are required to invest the tax savings in the rehabilitation and maintenance of their properties, and the Mills Act contract participant may receive property tax savings each year for improvements made to the property. If you go to the next slide, you'll see the proposal for rehabilitation and restoration. The applicant's estimated cost of all rehabilitation and maintenance is $263,730. Most of the work will be exterior. In fact, all of the work will be exterior work. Maintenance, which is planned to include maintenance to the roof, rafter tails. Also included is the replacement of railing, balcony, deck, siding, wooden beams, and windows, fully encompassing that $263,000. On the next slide, the fiscal impact to the city. The Mills Act contract approval would realize an estimated savings of $244,839 over the 10-year life of the contract. The estimated loss of revenue to the city would be $53,865 over that 10-year contract. And the tasks specified in the rehabilitation and maintenance work, total 263,730, exceed that estimated tax savings. Onto the next slide. For approval of the Mills Act contract, we need to make two findings. First, that the Mills Act contract will serve to compensate for the cost of rehabilitating and/or maintaining the cultural resource. We find that property tax savings resulting from the, from entering into the contract will be used to absorb the cost of the preservation, rehabilitation, and maintenance of the property as outlined in the rehabilitation and maintenance plan. On the next slide, finding number two, that the rehabilitation of the resource will occur prior to or in conjunction with the use of the Mills Act contract, and it will not impair the architectural, historic, or aesthetic integrity of the cultural resource. We find that according to the rehabilitation and maintenance plan, the proposed work is based on a 10-year period, and that the work would be subject to the conformance of the Secretary of Interior's standards for rehabilitation so as to avoid adverse impacts of the architectural, historic, and aesthetic integrity of the property. On the next slide, go over the alternatives that the city council may consider for tonight's Mills Act contracts. First, they may approve the Mills Act contract according to a city council resolution 20-51. They may deny the Mills Act contract stating reasons and findings that cannot be made, or they may continue the matter and provide direction to staff for further information. Tonight is recommended that the city council approve Mills Act contract pursuant to city council resolution 20-51. And we'll move straight forward to the next presentation. This will be for Mills Act contract application for 397 West Montecito, otherwise known as the Wilson Bixby House. On the next slide, you see the project location being located on West Montecito between Grove and Sunnyside Avenue, on the north side of that street. And on the next slide, you see its designation as a local architectural landmark. The property is listed in the city's register of local historic cultural landmarks. The property was purchased originally of a 20-acre, of the 20 acres from the Nathaniel Carter in exchange for an orange grove. And the house was, the house barn and tankhouse were both built, or all built in 1881. On the next slide, actually can skip two slides forward. I already went over what a Mills Act contract is. The rehabilitation and restoration and maintenance plan, all costing the applicant $216,000, will be of exterior and systems-related work. For the exterior work, the planned maintenance includes the exterior facade and porch. Also included are the replacement of windows, doors, and a roof. The owners plan to restore the tankhouse on the property as well as care and maintenance of the oak tree. Of the exterior work, this total cost is 181,000, or 85% of the total rehabilitation budget, and the remaining is for systems work, including a new HVAC system and insulation. On the next slide, we go over the fiscal impact. The property owner would realize an estimated savings for this Mills Act contract of $204,000 over the 10-year life of the contract. The estimated loss of revenue to the city would be $32,761 over that 10-year life. The tasks specified in the rehabilitation and maintenance work plan totaling $216,000 exceed that estimated tax savings. Onto the next slide, I'll just go over quickly what these findings were. The staff find that the property tax savings resulting from entering into a contract would be used to absorb the cost of preservation, rehabilitation, and maintenance. Onto the next slide. Staff also find that according to the rehabilitation and maintenance plan, the proposed work schedule is based on a 10-year period. The proposed work would be subject to the conformance of the Secretary of Interior's standards for rehabilitation so as to avoid adverse impacts to the architectural, historic, and aesthetic integrity of the property. Onto the next slide, we can go over the same alternatives. City council tonight can approve the Mills Act contract pursuant to city council resolution 19-50. They can deny the contract citing findings that cannot be made, or they can continue the matter. Tonight is recommended that the city council approve Mills Act contract pursuant to city council resolution 19-50. Thank you. That concludes my presentations for Mills Act contracts.
Okay, thank you. Questions?
Quick question, Mayor. Thank you for that presentation. Is there an enforcement mechanism to ensure that the tax savings is actually used for rehabilitation maintenance of the properties?
So we do, we do a Mills Act contract compliance report every year for each property that has a Mills Act contract. And we just went over the 22 properties that do have Mills Act, and we did receive compliance reports from them.
And Mayor Potem, you also have, pardon me, you also have the ability to do inspections of the properties. That's, that's in their contract. So we can do, I believe we have a, one inspection every five years is mandatory, but we can do inspections when we please upon notice to be occupied.
Thank you.
Yeah.
Thank you for the presentation. What is, what is our process of examining the, the actual cost estimates? What do we do to assure ourselves that they are reasonable? And secondly, are we the ones that need to make that call? Do we need to actually ascertain and through approval say, yeah, the, these, these repairs and the costs that we've, that we've noted here are reasonable?
So the contract itself goes over estimations of what the rehabilitation would cost based on what a historian has gone through to estimate what those rehabilitation items, line by line, would cost. For actually checking when they pull a permit for that, I would defer that question to our Director of Planning and Community Preservation.
Yeah, and maybe for the city attorney as well.
Yes, thank you. So the process that we use is we retain, there, as part of the annual maintenance report, they're required to provide receipts of work and other invoices to confirm that the work effort has been completed.
Do we, as a city council, do we, in approving this, are we essentially deeming these reasonable? And I, I'm not gonna hide the ball. I mean, I, we have two different applications here, two different houses. One, for example, one roof replacement cost is $75,000, which seems extremely high to me. The other house has a roof replacement cost of $15,000. You have one with a, a seal and paint job of $40,000. You have another with a similar exterior facade for $20,000. So this is a heightened question because we have two applications in front of us with seemingly wildly different estimates. And I'm somewhat concerned by some of the estimates, especially on the Gamble Carson House. So I guess I'm a little uncomfortable approving this if I am, by approving it, in some way saying I agree with these estimates. Because if I'm just taking the historian's word for it, and if that's what we as a city are doing, I think that's, that's sort of a flawed process. So how important is it that these numbers are right?
I would also like to point out that the, you, you mentioned the Carson Gamble House. That's a fairly substantial house, fairly, fairly large property. So I would assume that those estimates are reflecting, reflecting that as well.
And Councilmember here, BD, and I, I also believe how the tax saving is calculated is not based on the estimate of approvals, but it's kind of a complicated loss of income for owner occupied versus income-producing property. So the work that has to be done has to be in line with the Mills Act criteria for approving historic structures. But those are not necessarily a straight line to what the tax savings are. Even if, so even if they're a little out of context, I don't believe they actually come into play how the savings are calculated.
So what, what is the point? I guess we as a staff go back on a pretty regular basis and, and check receipts and see what things cost. So what, I guess, what's the point of doing that ultimately?
The, the, the point is not necessary to tie it back, the, the expense to, to an amount for reduction in property taxes to ensure that the property owner is using the funds rebated to them to keep the property up in historic standards. So when we look at what they're doing, they're listing, these are all things that are required to keep a historic home in good condition. We wouldn't want a property owner to use a rebate to, you know, re-carpet their basement or something like that, because it's only what can be seen and valued from the public. So the, the idea to check that the work is being completed and then getting a reasonable number is just to verify that they actually are doing that work and keeping the house up, up, up in shape.
Okay. I guess, does staff have any concern about, I'm not a contractor, I'm not a painter, but I've done work on houses. I mean, do, was there any concern about a $75,000 roof and a $40,000 paint job?
Again, it would depend on the property.
Here, this property, the-
Right, the, the Carson Gamble House. I would say the, the size of the property probably would warrant prices that they've submitted. They do seem high. And, but we're also going with the estimates that might, they might receive from either the, their contractors. And also, we've had in the past architectural historians identified some, and outlines much of that work. And to also address the point that you mentioned earlier, that was also answered by the city manager, the assessor's office will ultimately determine what that tax savings base will be. They will determine what that reduction in tax will be. So what we're looking at is basically general estimates on a table that we've used and received from the city of Los Angeles. And what we found out, probably last year, the city of Los Angeles stopped using that assessment table. So that's another question, whether we want to even itemize these maintenance repair line items moving forward.
It's a great question. There, there's an option not to do that? So you can approve a Mills Act contract without actually breaking down the itemized? Okay.
Yes.
Well, that makes me feel a little bit better then.
And then, Councilmember here, BD, in that, that situation, we'd probably rely less on the annual compliance report and more on some type of annual visual inspection. Again, just to ensure that nothing, you know, the shutters aren't falling off and, and things like that.
Okay, that was, that was helpful. Thank you.
Well, if I, if I could just tag on to that. So what you're saying is that when you, when you calculate the, the anticipated tax savings, that has really nothing to do with what they've submitted?
It does have something to do with we, what they submitted. We will identify the fee, you know, a base price that they indicate, and it's percentage of that amount. And it's also a percentage of what, what's included in the form as rental income, whether it's being used for rental purposes or not. But all that is factored into that, that table to come up with that final valuation.
So in other words, if, you know, the applicant's estimated cost is $263,000, and they're getting $244,000 in savings, when you, when they submit their annual compliance- when they submit their annual, uh, compliance report, say, the roof only cost thirty thousand dollars and the painting only cost twenty thousand dollars, does that change anything?
Ultimately not, no.
Okay. Well, that's, you know, that's troublesome in a way because, um, we're giving a, a big tax break and, uh, you know, for the city, like in the case of the, um, Gamble property is fifty-three thousand dollars over ten years. And they are getting that tax revenue savings, but could possibly be not spending the money. But you're just, we're concerned that the, the actual work is getting done. Is that right?
That's correct.
That's correct, Mayor. From our standpoint, we want to ensure the work is being completed, uh, in, in line with our standards. How the assessor determines the tax break is separate from us. The Mill, the Mills Act itself is a fairly complicated in how the assessment goes, but even the numbers we have before you tonight are, are just in a, a estimate, and the assessor's ultimately going to make that determination.
Yeah. Yeah, cause I, just a couple of things. I mean, I, like on the Bixby House, it was annual sanding and treating the, the porch floor. I don't know anybody who does that annually. I mean, I know people that have a meticulous porch, wooden porch floor, but not annually. So, do we check that it's actually done annually? I mean, you expect to see that in the report?
We would expect to see that in the compliance report currently, uh, that they submit, and that's what we would look for receipts with, but they're able to submit an annual, a, a new annual report and update it.
Yeah.
So, even after this, they may say, whoa, no one does that, and we're, we're gonna do something different. And again, as long as it's in line with maintenance and upkeep of the home, we would be okay with that.
Yeah. So, so how would we, what, what would happen if, uh, you, you know, like one little thing isn't gonna bother anything? Maybe four or five non-compliance items might cause a problem. At what point do we say you're out of compliance?
Mayor, so this year and last year, uh, we nearly had two properties in front of council for non-compliance, and council would have had, uh, two choices, either to not renew the contract, and that means at the end of the 10-year term they're in, um, the contract would expire. You could also cancel the contract, which would take place at the end of the tax year, and there would be a penalty associated with that. Uh, for our purposes, it was for properties that would not submit their annual report. We did a visual inspection, and we noted some areas. We asked them to address that specifically. Uh, we contacted them, uh, we had code enforcement go out twice, we sent a letter, we sent a certified letter, and then when we said we're gonna schedule it for council, uh, the reports came in. So, council does have options if property owners are not being compliant.
Yeah. Okay.
Can I follow up on that? So, reports came in, what did we do with the reports?
So, we, if we review the reports and it's in line with their overall property plan, and they appear to be legitimate expenditures, then we send them a letter that says you're in compliance this year, dates for next year are as follows. Um, and we, again, we'll do a visual inspection, a drive-by, and ask them for their annual compliance report next year as well.
So, this is comporting with, um, I, my memory hasn't served me well now on this. Some time ago, you brought this to our attention, that Mills Act contracts were not being followed up by the city. There were several that we weren't, we weren't even in communication with. Have we shorted all that up?
Yes, Councilmember Goss, that, uh, we are in year two, uh, year three of having fully compliant Mills Act contracts. Prior to that, we had Mills Acts that hadn't been in compliance for over a decade. We had property owners that didn't know they had a Mills Act in some cases, cause the property had sold. So, I, I believe we're in year three, it may be year two, but I believe we're in year three right now, fully compliant, all twenty-two properties.
So, so would it be fair to say that right now, we're being more diligent about it than we, we have been in the past?
Yes.
And so, we can reasonably expect, our council could reasonably expect that these, uh, month, yearly letters will come in, and they will be taken very serious?
Yes, that's correct, Councilmember Goss.
Okay. Hey, any other questions? Do we have, uh, any of the applicants here? Wonder if they would like to make a statement if they're here?
Hi, I'm John Gregor. I'm a owner of the Carson Gamble House. And I wanna start by appreciating the, the concern on, on prices, and, and yes, I was a bit shocked by the roof price, but that is a written quote that we have, and it's because of, um, so much damage was done to the underlying wood, uh, that supports the roof due to the house being left in disrepair for a number of years. So, we're passionate about, um, restoring a very, very beautiful, uh, house that is also quite large, um, and, and, um, wanna thank you for your consideration of our application.
Yeah, I'm going to, I'm gonna ask a question, if you don't mind, and I'll, just the same question for both applicants. Are you both willing to open your house to the public, uh, for, say, um, a, a tour of historic houses in Sierra Madre?
Yes, we would love to do that. We've had members from the Historical Society over to, um, come in the house, as they had not been able to do for decades. That's not happening this year, but, uh, we, we hope to be able to do that and, and, uh, and host events in the future. It's a beautiful property for, for such things.
Okay, thank you.
How you doing? Robert Bischof is my wife, Colleen. We're east, west Montecito. We've had the home for, she corrected me today, seven years, and we've been faithfully, uh, supporting and maintaining it. When the day we walked through it, we knew that we had just fallen in love with the, the home and have been continuing to restore it and just take as good a care of it as it had been for the fifty years that it was owned by its previous owner. I do maintain that porch every year and to my, uh, to the death of my knees, but hopefully I'll find the right stain that I won't have to do that every year at this point. But, uh, yeah, it's, it's been a passion of ours, and we hope to continue that. And we would welcome folks to come in and, and hopefully enjoy it as much as we do.
Okay, thank you. Is there any questions for the applicants? I should have asked. No?
No.
Okay, no questions. Thank you. Okay. Okay, this is a public hearing, so with that, I'll, I'll open the pub, open the discussion to the public. Are there any comments on either of these Mills Act proposals? Okay, um, seeing no one. Oh, we do have one, okay.
Mayor, members of the council, I've been coming to these meetings for two and a half years, and I've never spoken in public comments, so.
One time you did.
Oh, okay. Oh, I did on the, I take that back, yes, that's right. This is the second time. And, um, my husband Bob Spears and I, we live on Grandview, and we own a Victorian house, which we've owned, it's nineteen eighty-five. And I can assure you that owners of, uh, of historic homes in Sierra Madre buy them because of the love of restoring historic properties. But when you buy historic property, it's always three times what you think is gonna cost. It's not the standard. Nothing's square, nothing's level, uh, it's old, it needs to be replaced. So, uh, if you wanna know how to estimate on a historic property, just ask me. It's always three times what you think it's gonna be, and it always has to be, be done because it's not like stucco that you just paint and plaster over. So, I would support and I applaud anyone that would invest in a historic property and be willing to restore, to bring that lovely history and keep it in Sierra Madre. Thank you.
Thank you.
Good evening. Robert Parkhurst, and I am, uh, the owner and caretaker of three-seven-five East Grandview Avenue, Avenue, also known as the CJ Pegler House, son of the JC Pegler House. And I will agree, uh, with Ms. Spears, uh, what she said, um, you know, we are incredibly blessed to have this home. I, we actually, or my wife actually bought it before I had even seen it. She went and she walked in the house, walked in the, the lower level, and we've been looking at a number of houses before moving here. And before she even went upstairs, she turned to the realtor and said, this is the place. And we have not regretted it from a single day that we've been there. Prior to moving in, we did a, a fair amount of work on the house, upgrading the electrical, getting rid of the knob and tube to make it safe, um, bringing some things up to, up to standard. And it, it is, I, I'll agree, you encounter crazy things, like all of the electrical was in the baseboards. And so, when you have to move it up to code, you gotta move it quite a bit. You've gotta put in, um, smoke detectors everywhere. So, there's a lot of, of things that, that you have to do and taking care of it, but it is absolutely worth it, and, and I support your consideration of this, and having, I've been through and experienced it myself. Thank you.
Well, it's good that there's gonna be a, a historical home advocate on the city council here next month, too. Any other comments? Okay, with that, we'll bring it back to council. Any thoughts?
Just, just a couple of comments, and excuse the hoodie, I'm, I'm freezing now. And it's only five-eleven. But, but I appreciate the applicants coming today, and, and I, I really do love the idea of, um, if we can do a historic walkthrough inside some of the homes. Um, and, and you know, given the, the savings the city actually realizes over ten years, um, and, and considering how much we value our historic homes in the city, uh, I am looking forward to approving these, and, um, again, uh, we're gonna hold you to your word about letting us inside those homes.
Um, yeah, no, I'm, I'm in full support of, of both applications, and do wanna thank both applicants for, for being here and for doing this and, and, um, preserving history, you know, with the, with the homes. And, um, I, I do think that these are perfectly suitable for approval. I do think we as a, as a city should think about the process going forward on these applications as to the breakdown and, and the cost estimates, because I do think that we wanna be sure that these are reasonable estimates. And, um, usually, you have more than one source for, for pricing, and you have some sort of benchmark to go on, and it really hasn't piqued my interest until the, these applications, because we're considering them side by side. So, I, I think that the process needs to be tweaked a bit, and I don't know if that's, you know, let's talk to the state legislature and, and talk to them about how this tax savings need to directly correlate to the actual improvements. But, um, I think that, for future council members, and two of them up here, uh, when you vote on something like this, you're essentially, you know, putting your stamp of approval on it, and, um, I think we should be very comfortable with, you know, the estimates we get in the future. That being said, um, I'm, I'm in favor of both.
Councilmember Goss?
Yeah, I'm in favor of them both, too. Since we're losing two council members at the end of our next meeting, it's, it's worth this, worth it to say, I mean, we're, we're, by doing this, we're giving up some of our tax revenue. And that's not easy to do, because this council has been very fiscally responsible, and that's one of the reasons why we're in good shape right now. So, if we decide to make, uh, make a, a decision to subsidize, I think it has to be reflective of the values that we believe are, uh, widely held and closely held in the community. And, and restoring and preserving historic homes in this community is a widely held value. I think it's something that, uh, if you polled the people in the community, you'd get broad support. And that's, that's why I will support it, only because of that, because typically, you know, when we have, we've got a hundred different things we can spend money on every time we meet, and those dollars go very quickly. But I think this is a reflect, this is definitely a decision reflective of our community values, so strongly support it.
Yeah, I'll just, uh, echo the comments of my colleagues. I'm hundred, hundred percent in support of it, and again, we're all just mindful of the subsidy that our, our taxpayers are providing, but I do believe that the vast majority would see value in this, so. So, with that, uh, do we have a motion? We need two motions for, uh, Resolution twenty fifty-one and then Resolution nineteen fifty.
Do you wanna do them together, Mayor?
You can do them together.
Uh, I'll, I'll make the motion to approve Resolution twenty fifty-one and nineteen fifty.
Second.
Okay, all in favor?
Aye.
Okay, passes unanimously. Congratulations, applicants, and looking forward to seeing the house up close soon. Okay, next is another public hearing, consideration of adoption of Ordinance fourteen thirty-two.
Thanks, Mayor. We'll have Vincent Gonzalez, our Planning and Commu- Community Preservation Director, introduce us.
Thank you, Mayor, members of council. The city council directive to the planning commission, if you remember, was to reduce parking restrictions in the commercial zone overall. And following this directive, the planning commission appointed subcommittee to revise the parking code. And on September third, twenty twenty, the full body of the planning commission reviewed and accepted the amendments of the subcommittee and adopted Resolution twenty thirteen, recommending to the city council amendments to the parking code in its entirety. And that reference to Resolution twenty thirteen has two amendments, Exhibit A and Exhibit B. Exhibit A is the September third amendment. On October twenty eighth, the city council remanded the parking code back to the planning commission at the request of Commissioner Hut to allow staff to present new information that was not previously considered by the commission. And on November fifth, the planning commission reviewed the staff alternative and determined that it was unnecessary, stating that the current code is drafted achieves similar results. And the commission also made additional changes and edits to the parking code to achieve compliance with the city council directive. The revised recommendation from the planning commission, which is included in your packet as Exhibit B and dated November fifth, twenty twenty, reduces parking regulations and effectively establishes a parking credit program in the downtown. The more significant changes to the code revisions include that no new parking will be required for a change of use in an existing building. Essentially, essentially what that means is if the site has three parking spaces, no additional parking will be required for a change of use, such as retail to restaurant. Our prior code would require a significant increase in parking. Exceptions to this include that existing parking cannot be removed. So, if you have three parking spaces at an existing site, you have to, uh, you, you can't remove those three parking spaces. You have to retain those, and if you do remove them, you will have to replace them. Adding new square footage to an existing building will also trigger additional parking. And lastly, the new, new construction shall comply with parking requirements, including new residential uses. So, if you're building new, you have to comply with the full parking requirements that are outlined in the code order, in, in the municipal code. So, those are essentially the major issues, uh, that were introduced by the commission overall. And the alternatives before the commission this evening, or the, the council this evening, is to prove Resolution twenty thirteen, as was originally introduced by the planning commission on September third. You can approve Resolution twenty thirteen as amended by the planning commission on November fifth, twenty twenty, which is Exhibit B. And Exhibit B C is a clean version of that ordinance, or you can provide additional, uh, recommendations to the staff of the planning commission. So, staff is recommending that the city council consider option number two from the alternatives and introduce the first reading ordinance, number fourteen thirty-two, as revised on November fifth, twenty twenty, by the planning commission, which amends Sections seventeen point zero eight point zero two zero, where terms phrases defined, Section seventeen point twenty point zero two zero definitions, and Chapter seventeen point six eight parking in, in its entirety. That concludes my presentation. We're, you're available for questions.
Okay, thank you, Director Gonzalez. What questions?
I have a question. Thank you for the presentation. I guess from a, from a very basic level, what this, this ordinance gets to when a new business or potentially residential comes into downtown, the, the applicant, the new business owner, the new resident, or the owner of the building, needs to provide additional off-street parking? Why? So why, why do we require that?
For, for new construction.
Right. Like from a policy standpoint, what's the, what's the thinking?
Well, I, I think what we, what we would want to do is capture and require new parking for new construction. If we had a new commercial building, for instance, say it was a development at the Taylor Meat Site, then we would certainly want to park that. And there's plenty of space to do so with a reconfigured site. But ultimately, what we don't want to do is overburden the downtown area with a parking demand might, depending upon the use, might be quite excessive.
What the, an example would be what?
Like maybe a mixed-use building with both residential uses above a retail space.
I think the, and the medical office that's just across from us here, when that came in, required 34 parking spaces total, but based on use. And if we were to try and absorb that in downtown on the off-street parking that we have, that could be difficult. So what, what the planning commission recommendation does is for current storefronts, it requires no new parking at all. But we do want to make sure that we capture parking for new construction or residential. Because some, some uses of new construction, as the planning director said, could, could entail a lot of parking.
Which would potentially harm the existing business, businesses. I mean, that, it sounds like that's what this gets at, which is protecting other businesses. I mean, I guess the question is why, why wouldn't the market just protect them, you know? I mean, what, the, the off-street parking, the off-street parking is what it is, right? There's not going to be, we're not going to have new parking structures built in downtown. We're not going to have new parking lots. So to me, it, it has always seemed like an arbitrary box to check that potentially keeps people out that otherwise would want to come in. So I think this proposal's good, and I don't want to get into comments now. But I guess the ultimate question is why not just deal away with it altogether? Like what, what is the real risk?
So again, if you look at a Taylor's spot, if that had a development, right now, if you go to Taylor's, you have plenty of parking. New development could come in that's building on top of that parking. And if we're not able to recapture or, or ensure extra parking, then over time, we can overburden our street parking and our parking lot parking. So we, we want to make sure our downtown, our businesses aren't burdened, to your point. But we also want to ensure that new construction isn't causing congestion or a certain type of office use where people could, the employees could come in and park all day. That's further going to take away parking that would otherwise, otherwise turn over for, you know, restaurants and, and party stores.
Okay, thanks.
Okay, I don't have any questions either. So with that, this is a public hearing. So I'll open it up to the public for comments. Hey, oh, we have some, okay.
Mayor Capocha, Mayor Pro Tem Harris Mandy, council members Goss and Harabedian, thank you for your time tonight. You have before you the continued efforts of the planning commission to produce the parking code that has been requested. The planning commission worked diligently with staff to ensure that the ordinance has been cleaned up and everyone is clear on the intent to allow current and existing storefronts equal access to all available off-street public parking, while exempting new construction, residential, and other uses to include office, educational, and recreational, and entertainment facilities, and eliminate the payment in lieu of parking mechanism. I think that what you see before you has succeeded at that. We did, at our meeting, contemplate the idea of removing all parking from new construction and additional construction, but we had not been given any direction from the city council. And it was pretty clear the direction we'd been given, and we wanted to stay within those purviews. If there is further direction to change that in the future, we think that in the interim, this will make the code significantly better until we receive that further direction. Thank you.
Okay, thank you.
David Gordon, fair view of you having been a critic of the relation between planning commission and council. I would like to welcome the fact that this is a planning commission that has responded to council's instructions. And there is now peace and light, certainly on the issue of parking. But I would urge everybody to follow Councilmember Harabedian's view, tear up the rulebook entirely. If there is a point at which parking becomes an issue in Sierra Madre, then maybe you can introduce it. But at the moment, it's not necessary, in my view, to have any rules and restrictions, requirements at all for parking. And I would encourage an even more radical deregulation effort than the one that is going to be passing now. Thank you.
Thank you. Would anybody else like to speak on parking? Okay, with that, I'll close the public hearing and bring it back for discussion.
I'll just comment that, you know, I, I was concerned when we had pulled this item out. And I'm so happy to see where it's at right now. Especially when you're looking at, you know, eliminating the in lieu fee parking, reducing parking regulations to a greater extent than initially was, was recommended. I'd love to learn more about the, the debate between adding parking for new development. I'm not quite there yet. But I think what we see before us is exactly in line with the directives that were given from council to planning commission. And I, I think we're in a good place and I look forward to future discussions on other items that planning commission will be working with. Because I think we found a nice sweet spot as how to work forward. And so thank you for presenting this today, and I look forward to approving it.
Fine. I really have nothing to add to that. I think it's precisely what we're looking for. And I am intrigued about the idea of getting rid of all parking regulations. That sounds really interesting. I don't think we'll be talking about that tonight. But maybe in the next year or two, we can agendize that just for fun. Who knows where that'll go? But I, I do appreciate the work done by the planning commission on this. Usually, as usual, they're putting a lot of time and effort in. I think they got it right here.
Yeah, and I agree. I mean, I think I'll just echo my colleague's comments and say that the planning commission's done a really nice job here. Because I think the effect of it is making it a lot easier to, to be a new business in town and an existing business. And I do think that we are getting, you know, it's one step closer to, I think, getting rid of, you know, more and more of these arbitrary hurdles to open up a business here. And so I think, all things considered, this is a, this is a great step. And I do hope that, you know, future councils rethink about, from a policy standpoint, why, why we still worry about parking in this manner? Because I do think we as a council, when it came to the commercial code and, and other things, I mean, I do think that we're, we're pretty open to having the market figure that out, right? And if you're a new business owner or an existing business owner and you're not coming to Sierra Madre because of potential parking requirements, that concerns me rather than you're not coming here for other reasons. So, but I think what the planning commission has done here is, is really good and I'm in favor of it.
Okay, planning commission, thank you very much. I'm really, really pleased with what we have in front of us. Because my biggest concern is that, especially now due to COVID, we have a lot of empty storefronts. And the priority is to get people to move into those storefronts. And now I think with the revision of the commercial code and the removal of some of these parking restrictions, I think we are poised now, when the economy picks up, for someone to choose to come here versus Arcadia or Monrovia or someone else. So given that office space and retail, big retail space and things like that, you know, there's just not much happening. There's a surplus now. So I think that issue will be pushed off into the future. So we have solved what we need to solve right here in front of us. And so I'm not going to comment further on whether we need parking for new construction or not. At this point, it's irrelevant. So again, just to the planning commission, thank you for taking, looking at it again and doing a good job and even going beyond what I really thought was going to happen here. And I think this is just an excellent, excellent proposal, and I support it enthusiastically. So with that.
I'll move to accept ordinance 1432, section, amending Section 17.08.020. Is that the right one? Yes.
A second.
Okay, all in favor?
Aye.
Okay, passes unanimously, none opposed. Okay, with that, let's, we have another public hearing. This is for the, the new proposed downtown district. So Mr. City Manager?
Thank you, Mayor. This will be our management analyst, Sophia Kavnatsky, and our public works director, Chris Smino.
All right, good evening, Mayor and City Council. This next public hearing is being held to approve the resolutions to initiate proceedings and declaring its intention to form the district, along with approving the engineer's report and to set the date of the public hearing for the formation of this district. Before the date of this public hearing, assessment ballots will be mailed to the property owners within the proposed district's boundary to vote for or against this formation. For some background, the city currently has four special assessment districts. They handle parking, lighting, landscaping, and associated maintenance within the different business district areas of the city. Two of these districts are based on a benefit per parcel charge, and the other two zones are based on property value. And because of these two different methods of calculating assessment charges, you see some parcels paying as little as $40 per year on the low end, and then on the high end, about $8,800 per year. And because of this unequal calculation of charges, two of these districts operate at a surplus with a combined fund balance of about $700,000 and two operate at a deficit and require a general fund subsidy of about $35,000. Combining these districts into one downtown assessment district, which would handle all of the lighting, landscaping, and parking maintenance for these parcels on a benefit per parcel charge would ensure the most efficient use of funds while decreasing the total amount assessed for all of the properties by about $30,000. And a majority of these property owners that are already paying assessment charges would see their annual charge decrease as well. Taking into consideration the financial burden placed on all of our, you know, property owners and businesses. Due to the pandemic, the city also intends to discount those assessment charges for the first two years, should this formation succeed. So all the parcels would receive a zero charge on their assessment in fiscal year '21, '22, and then 50% of that proposed charge in '22, '23. And then they will only be charged that full proposed amount from fiscal year '23, '24 and onward. The city has hired NBS to prepare the engineer's report. They've worked with staff and the city attorney to ensure that all of these recommendations meet all of the regulations to comply with the 218 process and assessment district regulations. They are also going to hand it, handle the ballot process and submit all of the materials to LA County. So again, the recommendations are to adopt the resolution initiating the proceedings to form the new downtown lighting and landscaping maintenance districts, to adopt the resolution declaring the intention to form the new district, the approval of the engineer's report, and setting a time and place for the public hearing for January 12th, 2021, and ordering the initiation of these assessment ballot proceedings.
Okay, thank you. Questions?
Thank you for that presentation, Analyst Kavnatsky. I, I just wanted to make sure I understand. So with the phasing in of, of the assessments from 2021 to 2024, the total city subsidy will be $145,000 in that period of time, despite our surplus that's existing now?
Yes, that's correct. So the surplus can only be used within that district. So until it's transferred into the general fund in '22, '23, that's when we can start using those funds.
So essentially, would that $145,000 be returned to, to like general fund because now we'll be have, have access to the district's surplus?
They wouldn't be paid at the same time. So the first year would be that $90,000. And then by '22, '23, those surplus funds would be into the general fund and we could fund that for those assessments.
I think I understand. Thank you.
Quick question. Thank you for the presentation. NBS is the same company that we used last time for the initiative, the initiative that failed, correct?
Yes, that's correct.
I, I think that a big reason why it failed was because when we, when we set out on that 218, we had asked them at the meeting, I don't know if there's a representative from NBS here, whether they could state on each property owner's ballot just how much tax savings they would, they would incur by voting yes. Because it's a no-brainer. You save with a yes vote, you pay more with a no vote. More people voted no for reasons beyond us. But I think it's because they just weren't informed. So I, I would, I really want to re-ask that question again, which is, can we, can we ensure that the ballots have a, a statement on just how much tax savings each taxpayer will, will benefit from by voting yes? And I don't know if there's a representative here. We were told yes, and then ultimately, they didn't do it. So have we ironed that out?
So we don't have a representative here tonight, but I was actually just speaking to our consultant today. So the city, we have staff that are planning to send out mailers and that will go out before we send out the official ballot that will say fiscal year '21, '22, you'll pay zero. '22, '23, here's what you'll pay. Then '23, '24, this is, you know, what it's going to be from now on, along with the current amount that they pay. We were talking to our consultant today, so we're trying to figure out how to make that easy to read on the ballot as well. So that is something discussed.
I mean, I, I don't know what the, the fee is that we're paying NBS, but it's, you know, they're making money on this. So I, we should be having them do more of the work than you guys. Because I, I just think that's critical to making this work this time. And, and again, I guess I'm a little perturbed because last time, they stood in front of us and said they could do it, and then they didn't do it and it failed. So I know that there was serious consideration with going someone new to do this process, but we thought that with their experience, it would be good going with them. So I just don't want to, I don't want to see the same result again.
Okay. Any other questions? No, I don't have any questions, having been through this once already and do have the same concerns that Councilmember Harabedian has expressed. But I also think that having gone through it once will do much better this time. And I think NBS is, is very motivated to have a success under their belt this time. So, okay. Let's see, again, this is a public hearing. So with that, I'll open it up to the public. Any comments by the public on our downtown redistricting? Just want to make one more comment, that this frees up, if this passes, this frees up, I think it was $700-plus thousand that we could invest in the downtown as well. So I think it's just really important for the benefit of our downtown that this passes. Okay, seeing no comments, we'll bring it back to council. I don't, I'm just in favor of trying it again here. This is a great thing for downtown and for Sierra Madre residents if it passes.
Well, you know, I think we've all expressed that frustration we had during the first round and surprise that it didn't pass. I'm hoping that some of our lessons learned will be applied for this time, doing a little bit more one-on-one outreach to some of our businesses. I know we can still continue to work through the chamber, but I think those personal touches are going to be critical this time and getting those numbers as, as Councilmember Harabedian. are going to be critical this time, and getting those numbers as, as Councilmember Hera Bedian in chair to, to demonstrate and show that the savings. But, you know, knowing that we have to subsidize $30,000 plus for a couple of districts, and we have a surplus of $700,000 that just sits there that cannot be used in a way that'll benefit our downtown and our businesses, it's, it's just a shame. So, you know, use me, whoever's doing some of that outreach, so that we can make sure that we're touching all the businesses to really educate.
Other comments?
Here, here. Yep, here, here is right.
Okay, so we've got several resolutions that we need to approve here, huh? So.
Can we do them all? It looks like three resolutions, or, yeah, two resolutions, adopting the engineer's report, and then setting a time and place. How, how do you want it, Mr. Mayor?
Just go ahead. I think we all know we're talking about 20-70, 20-71, approving the engineer's report and approving the, what is it here, the last one?
Setting a time and place for the public hearing, January 12.
Okay, so who will make that motion?
I will. I'll move for approval of resolutions 20-70 and 20-71, and for approval of the engineer's report, and for setting a time and place for a public hearing of January 12, 2021, and ordering the initiation of the assessment ballot proceedings.
Second?
Okay, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Passes unanimously, none opposed. Okay. One more public hearing. AB 1600 Annual Compliance.
Thank you, Mayor. This will be our manager of finance and budget, Colby Conasek.
Good evening, Honorable Mayor Poch and City Councilmembers. I'm presenting the AB 1600 Annual Compliance Report for Development Impact Fee Activity for Fiscal Year 2019, 2020. California Government Code Section 66006 requires cities imposing public facilities fees and to prepare an annual accounting of the revenues and expenditures in each of the funds categories, as well as an explanation of the use of the funds. City received no new development fees during the year. Interest income of $17,000 was received and distributed free use rateably across the fund categories. City had an expenditure program for a variety of eligible products during fiscal year. Attachment A of the agenda report details projects during fiscal year 1920 that were completed, under where pending by fee category and are as follows. The city library inaugurated Phase 1 of the radio frequency identification project with expenditures of $10,800. Public safety fund provided $50,000 in debt service runs for one of the city's fire engines. This inflow coincided with the final payment to the past release, which originated in 2011, and the city now has title to the fire engine and several other vehicles. Parks Quimby Fund contributed $11,700 towards the community pool updates and improvements. Total project expenditures for the year totaled $72,500 in the fiscal year, leaving an ending balance of $974,000. Attachment B shows projects approved in June of this year and are underway or pending for fiscal year 2020, '21, the year we're currently in. The library continued its radio frequency ID project with the final Phase 2 for $25,400 in budget. Parks Quimby has a busy schedule in 2020, '21 with three different projects. The continuation of city pool improvements for $28,300. The Sierra Vista Parking Lot Project with a budget of $65,000. And the Kirsten Court Refresh Project with a budget contributing $190,000 towards the total project cost. Transportation category included a budget of $200,000 for road resurfacing projects. The water fund is splitting the cost of new fencing gate project at the city yard spreading grounds. Water share is $50,000. The aforementioned project is also being contributed to by the sewer fund, which contributes $25,000 for the rest of the project. Finally, Sewer Fund has a $270,000 budget that will contribute to the acquisition of a vacuum service truck. These projects in aggregate are $738,700 for the year fiscal year 2020, 2021, and would leave a projected balance available in the development impact fees of approximately Staff recommends that the city council receive and file the annual AB 1600 Compliance Report for Fiscal Year 2019, '20 in accordance with California Government Code 66006. This concludes my presentation. I'm happy to answer any questions regarding the financial aspects of the AB 1600 report, and Director Semino can answer any questions regarding the projects themselves.
Okay, thank you, Mr. Conasek. Any questions? No questions? I don't have any questions either. Thank you for thorough reports.
Thank you all.
Okay, again, public hearing, so with that, I'll open it up to the public. Are there any comments on the past expenditures or the expenditures for the current fiscal Okay, seeing no one, we'll bring it back to the council discussion. Well, I'll just say that I, I think that what we've got on the agenda for the rest of the fiscal year, these are appropriate expenditures. It's, it's good that we've got the money to do this stuff, and it's much needed. So that's my only comment.
Agreed.
Okay, so this is a receive and file. We don't need a motion, correct?
Correct.
Okay, good. Consider it received and filed. All right, so two more items on the agenda now. Discussion items, consideration of a joint well agreement between the city of Sierra Madre and the city of Arcadia.
Good afternoon, Mayor, and members of the council. It really is a pleasure to be here tonight to bring to you the joint well agreement that will require council action. If you can recall, about a year ago, council authorized staff to begin negotiations with the city of Arcadia on a joint well. Joint well will improve the city of Sierra Madre's water sustainability and reliability by providing a well capable of delivering about 40% of the city's needs from a source outside of the Raymond Basin. As you're, as you are well aware, a prolonged drought, along with years of over-extraction, have, have taken a toll on our groundwater source, and, and as a result, our, sorry, as a result, our groundwater rights have been reduced, and we rely on imported water that we take and spread into our spreading grounds. A joint well with the city of Arcadia will reduce the dependency on that MWD interconnection and provide sustainability, not for just the next few years, but hopefully for generations to come. The idea of a, of a source outside of the Raymond Basin is not a new idea. In 1959, the city of Sierra Madre, along with the cities of Alhambra, Monterey Park, and Alhambra, formed the San Gabriel Valley Municipal Water District with the idea of bringing supplemental water to our region. In 1975, that pipeline was completed and terminated in the main basin. Since then, Sierra Madre has been looking for a way to bring main basin water to Sierra Madre. An economic way to obtain main basin water is to form a joint well agreement with the city of Arcadia. The joint well would be physically located in the city of Arcadia and access main basin water. We would use the city of Arcadia's pipelines with the pre-established interconnection on Sierra Madre Boulevard that would bring water, portable water directly into our distribution system. The district has agreed to pay the capital cost of the joint well, which is estimated at $1.8 million for Sierra Madre's share. To summarize, the joint well between the city of Sierra Madre and the city of Arcadia, the joint well will provide, again, a reliable, sustainable source for, for not just the next few years, but for future generations, and will help our water district meet long-term water needs of not just Sierra Madre, but the other three member agencies. Staff is recommending that the city council approve the joint well agreement for the ownership of a new groundwater production well in the main San Gabriel Basin between the city of Sierra Madre and the city of Arcadia. The city of Sierra Madre will own 50% of the joint well and 50% of its production capacity. With that, I'd be happy to answer any questions.
Hey, do we have any questions?
I'd just like to comment on the very fine report, very, very excellent news.
Yes. Okay. Thank you very much. With that, we'll open it up to the public. Anybody want to comment on our joint well?
Oh, De Alcorn, I just want to say, I'm, one of the water, I have had for years, I had a worry, concerned about the water, which we all had, and I voice it, and I'm very glad that this has happened. I do have a question, though, is, now it's a joint thing between Arcadia and Sierra Madre, and suppose the other cities involved with that water basin, are there, are there impacts that this is going to affect, potentially affect, because you mentioned some other cities involved in that basin? Is there some other, other impacts that might happen as a result of being that joint water thing? Is this pretty clear exactly? Our water allocation, and how's it going to be affected? Is there some impact that might happen with that? Thank you.
Anybody else would like to make a comment? Okay, I'm going to ask Director Reynoso to answer the question. I think I could answer that, and I'd be more than happy to, but we'll let the expert.
Mr. Alcorn, thank you for a very good question. When the pipeline was terminated in the main basin, the city of Sierra Madre received non-prescriptive rights to pump water out of the main San Gabriel Basin. What that means is that we can extract water from the main basin, but we have to replenish what we take. So what our district, so that's where our district comes in. Any water that we take from the main basin, are, we pay our, the water district $200 per acre foot, and they replenish that water. So we have non-prescriptive rights to produce water from the main basin. We are a party to the main basin without prescriptive rights that gives us the right to pump water out of that basin.
So the other part of the question, does it affect anybody else? The answer is no, because whatever we draw is replaced by the water district.
That is correct.
Yeah. Thank you. Okay. All right, discussion on this one? Comments? Go ahead, Mayor Protim.
I can comment really quickly. You know, I think when I, when Councilmember Goss and I first got on council, this, you know, water obviously wasn't a topic, it was an important issue, and this was an aspirational dream, like this was so far-fetched, and we just never thought this would get here, at least this soon. So I just want to commend staff, Director Reynoso. I know you've been working diligently with Arcadia and with the water district and our leadership also at, at our staff level. This has really been something that is important to the sustainability of our city and how we manage our water, and I'm just very excited that we're able to see this today.
It's, it's hard to, to actually verbalize how impactful and important this is for our city. I mean, this is probably arguably the biggest thing that's happened here for decades, because the biggest existential threat to Sierra Madre has been our water situation. And I think that this project really does ensure that that threat effectively goes away. So, you know, it's, you don't want to be hyperbolic and, and, and start cheering and crying, but it's, it's a huge deal. So, you know, staff needs to be very, very much commended on this for negotiating this. Our water subcommittee, the mayor and Councilmember Goss for, for the years of hard work on this, and, and our water district representatives, you know, Tom Love and, and now Miles Prince for helping push this through. But really, you know, I think it comes down to staff. We've been beating on that drum for a long time, and there's a lot of reasons why it might not have been able to get done, but staff got it done. So, I mean, this is unquestionably, in my eight years, the biggest thing that, that we've accomplished, so I'm just very proud.
If I could add to that, it's getting done tonight before you guys leave, which is very fitting, because we've all, as, as Mayor Protim said, we labored through some very stressful times because of that last drought, and the mayor and I spent a lot of time going back and forth, back and forth, and early on, when we were in the water subcommittee, we weren't even talking about a joint well. It was out of, you know, let's face it, the, the relationship between the city and Arcadia wasn't, wasn't even worth discussing. So these were really pipe dreams. So, yeah, the statement that staff has done a great job, Director Reynoso, our city manager, all the folks involved, is, is truly an understatement. It's really a tremendous accomplishment, and I'm really proud to be a part of it personally.
Yes, absolutely, and I just want to point out, just emphasize, the water district was formed in 1959, and here it is 61 years later, and the promise of that district forming to actually deliver water to Sierra Madre is coming to fruition. So it's pretty amazing, and I do want to thank our forefathers for having that vision to join the district, because as Director Reynoso says, we, we pay $200 an acre foot for supplemental water, and part of the reason to form the district, which was led by Sierra Madre, I might point out, was to avoid the annexation into the Metropolitan Water District, who pays over $600, or maybe it's way more than that now, for untreated water. So this, this is pretty incredible. It really is, as Councilmember Hera Bedian says, I mean, this is the, this is an accomplishment that is the greatest accomplishment, I think, of Sierra Madre City Council in many, many years. And I just have to add on too, this is just incredible how our staff, our city manager, Director Reynoso, and, you know, Chris Semino had a hand in this as well, and working hard to rebuild that relationship with Arcadia. And I do want to give thanks to our neighbors in Arcadia, too, for being cooperative with us after all this time to properly manage the, the East Raymond Basin here in a sensible way that makes it sustainable for both parties to draw out of it. So this is, this is really profound, folks, and I'm very, very proud of what everybody's been able to accomplish. So with that, we have a motion to approve it?
I think it would be appropriate for our subcommittee members to make these motions in seconds.
Okay.
Okay, what are the motions?
Agreed.
Just to approve the contract. Go ahead.
Okay, well, I'd like to move to approve the contract.
And I'll second that. All in favor?
Aye.
Okay, thank you. Motion passes unanimously. And one more discussion item, consideration of a contract for parking enforcement services.
Thank you, Mayor. Our management analyst, Sophia Kavnatsky, will present this.
All right, thank you, Mayor. So our last discussion, this concerns contracting parking enforcement in the city. For some background, parking enforcement has traditionally been the responsibility of cadets. However, the city has not employed cadets since 2018, and the responsibility of parking enforcement has not been assigned to a dedicated responsibility since 2019. In the past, the city council has discussed contracting out parking enforcement services. This would enforce parking in the commercial district near trails and parks, and removing abandoned or junk vehicles in city parking lots and on the streets as well. Currently, our patrol officers only respond to parking enforcement complaints while on their patrol shift, and they don't proactively enforce parking in the commercial district. Although parking issues can be addressed through resident and business calls, the police department, there's no consistency to this program because patrol and service calls are a higher priority. As a result, the police department has only issued three parking citations in the downtown area over the past five months. And while there have been concerns raised in the past about over-enforcement in the city, there are also a lot of complications that come with under-enforcement. The city's received a number of complaints about cars remaining parked past their two-hour and 20-minute zones, and with the expansion of outdoor dining, we've lost some parking spots, and businesses also want to see a lot of turnover of cars and business to get through this. And having dedicated parking enforcement in this. parking enforcement in this area and all throughout the city, honestly, it's pretty useful around the trails as well. This would ensure consistent enforcement of city and state parking codes, and this would also help to extend to other problem areas in the city, as I said, around the trails. The city has received an indicative proposal from Intercon Security Systems. They are a local security company and do parking enforcement for a lot of our neighboring cities, so Alhambra, Azusa, Arcadia, Pasadena, San Gabriel, and so on. This proposal would provide a part-time parking enforcement. This would be 25 hours of service a week. This would be Tuesdays through Sundays, tentatively, 11:00 a.m. to 6:00 p.m. This would be a parking representative on an electric bicycle, and this contract would be $40,298 annually. Staff is recommending that the city council authorize the city manager to execute a sole-source contract with Intercon Security. They would conduct parking enforcement on a 25-hour-per-week schedule. Alternatively, the city council may choose to continue parking enforcement as is currently conducted, which is limited to an as-needed, primarily complaint-driven basis, or they also may hire police cadets to begin parking enforcement.
Okay, questions? I do have a question. The contract does, it has hours, like 11, 11 o'clock to 4 o'clock, five days per week. Are we going to be too predictable just being held to those hours?
So we can change the schedules in conversation with Intercon. The general idea is just a 25-hour-per-week schedule. So whether we decide to do Tuesday through Sunday or another day, I believe we can just work that out with them. We just have to give them prior notice.
Can they ticket for U-turns?
I believe they only do parking enforcement, so that would be police department responsibility.
Okay. Okay, yeah, no other questions for me?
Is there a reason why we haven't employed cadets since 2018?
I believe Chief Armlin might have a better idea, but from what I understand, I think it's just the resources.
Councilmember Harabedian, we have promoted our last two cadets. The, the idea of cadets is you, you bring them in, train them, and then you spread the gospel of Sierra Madre. We were, we were lucky to keep two of them here. We went through a, a small reorganization of our police department. Last year, we brought on a civilian commander, and we decided to forego for this year and last year cadet program until we figured out exactly how we wanted police to be staffed. And now we're having kind of a larger conversation about what is the responsibility of police and where should we invest our funds. So at this time, we thought outsource, outsourcing parking would be a better use of the funds in a cadet program.
How much do we pay cadets?
It's not much. It's, they're part-time positions, so probably somewhere around 12,000 a year for, for part-time.
So this breaks down to 30, about $30 per hour. And I'm just wondering if it makes more sense to, I assume cadets are, are, one, cheaper than that, but two, they're, they're part of the city family. So, you know, it seems like there might be benefits to going with cadets over Intercon, but, you know, if there's other reasons why we don't have cadets. I know the chief had mentioned that we're, we're looking to bring back our bicycle patrol, which might, you know, coincide nicely with more parking enforcement, but...
The, Councilmember Harabedian, the cadet program would be cheaper, but parking was only a small part of their assignment. They, they did a lot of other things. And again, the idea was to grow them professionally, not, not to use them only for parking.
Yeah. Okay. Thank you.
Other questions? Okay, none for me. Thank you. We'll open it up for public comment. Any concerns about parking enforcement contract? Okay, seeing no one, bring it back to council. Thoughts or comments?
I, I think there's somewhat of a blessing that they are not, that the people that are enforcing parking are not part of the Sierra Madre family. But, you know, if there's one issue I feel that I get approached about most, especially if I'm walking to the pharmacy or just cruising into Taylor's, it, it really is about parking. And I know during this time of COVID, it's been important to, to be as lenient as possible in many ways. But I think we're at a point now, especially when we're working with our businesses and we're, the theme of our, this, this meeting today of, of ensuring that we are supporting our businesses. You know, there's just been little to no turnover in some of these spots where I'm hearing employees are parking in them, or I freak out when I'm at 25 minutes and I'm, am parked at the 20-minute green parking spots. So I, I think this is a good use of our resources at this time, and we can definitely revisit in a year. But I think this is an important, for what we need to do right now for our downtown businesses.
No, I, I wanted to just comment that the, I agree with everything you said. The trailhead area, I think, will get, be a beneficiary of this as well. I think it's a good, I think, reaching out to the folks up there who've been affected by the higher trail volume, I think this is going to be a, could be helpful to them. I think it's, it's a positive step in that direction as well.
Yeah, we took a look at this, I think, back in 2013, and apparently, God, it was so long ago, I couldn't even remember, but we never implemented it. And, you know, I think at the time, there was a concern, if I remember, we were concerned about the perception that we were rubbing for money and just trying to issue tickets to get revenue. But over time, I've just become convinced that it's, it really is necessary to enforce the parking to protect the businesses so that we can get the turnover in the spaces. And this appears to be the most efficient way to do it. It was great when the cadets were doing it. I'd see them, you know, marking the tires and issuing tickets, but I agree that it's not appropriate to have higher cadets just to do this. And we really don't want highly-paid officers, you know, just doing this as part of their regular job. So I think it's the right thing to do now. And if it doesn't work out, we'll drop back and punt and do something else. So I'm all for it.
Agreed. I think eventually, you know, hopefully there's technology that, that can be utilized to make it even more cost-effective. But I'm in favor, so I'll move to, to approve.
Second?
Okay, all in favor?
Aye.
Okay, passes unanimously and unopposed. Okay, that's the last thing on the agenda. Are there any items for future agendas that somebody would like to suggest? Okay, so with that, we'll adjourn the meeting. Okay, thanks, everybody, for coming, and thank you, staff, for doing a great job. It's just incredible that you're able to do this and pull it off so well. Thank you.